Good evening, I'm calling the meeting to order and before we begin, I will ask the town manager to announce the protocols for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town YouTube channel. We ask that those on Zoom keep their microphones muted and cameras off, they're not involved in the current discussion. And that those in person remain quiet, they are not involved in the current discussion during the public comment period. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand functions here on Zoom. And if this meeting gets interrupted for any reason, we will end the meeting immediately and send out a new link via email.
Okay, thank you. The first item is the consideration of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion? Okay, I heard Councilmember Kumar and then you. Is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Now we will turn to our public comment period. And there's no one in the room. Is there anybody online that wishes to make a comment? Okay. Thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Oh, I wanna say something about it.
Okay, let's move it first and then.
Well. Okay, so. You're moving it, right?
Right.
And who's second? Steve. Okay, discussion.
Um, I think that that if we're not having a council meeting in the month of August, we should not have an August 18th work session because how the schedule is set up now is we have our July 7 town council meeting, then we have a July 21st work session and then we're skipping the August.
Well, the reason why, the reason why is it was requested by Councilmember Heller that we don't have. But we have to have something on the potential agenda for August in case there's the need for a hearing. So it can be changed. So this is just the, this is just the.
But we've got like two, because we've got two work sessions in a row and then a meeting. And so like August 18th is like right in the height of travel time. And so if we're not doing a town council meeting, I'm not sure we should have an August work session.
Can I say that when I suggested this is because I saw that other towns took August off. And I know personally I found it annoying because I travel in August too. And I said, why are we meeting in August? Why can't, why shouldn't we have have a month off? And Jeffrey's point was, you know, people might need something from us.
Well, the reason historically we've always scheduled August because there's often things that come up. And secondly, and secondly, um, because if if we were to skip August, then the meeting, this is like historically, the meeting could possibly be hours and hours in September. So what I would suggest is that just to, this is just, this is just the meeting that will, the, and the schedule that will go out. But, but when we get closer to August, then the council can move to cancel the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea of Debbie's to like not have a council meeting in August, but I, like, I, I think we should have no meeting, like not even a work session.
Well, I think, I think it just would be better to leave August as a placeholder and then in June or July, you, one of you could move to, to cancel the meeting.
There's one reason not to do that. Because it sets up the expectation that we are here and we are having business and someone could say, well, you, you had this on the calendar all along. I guess I.
Two would say, but who would say that?
Oh, somebody. I don't know. I'll say two things. One, I did not sit here and talk to this. Two, two, I, I think we can always call a special session, you know, I think we can do that.
The reason, but the reason why it would be good to put a placeholder is the people could schedule around that if necessary. So I, so I would recommend, you know, this is, this is, you know, basically the recommendation of me and the town manager. So I would, I think it's better if we put some kind of placeholder and then it can be changed. Like, let's say in January, you all make some plans in August, then we can change it, but just for now, just leave, I just say, just leave it. No, but you have a definite for August 18.
I definitely do.
For August 18.
Because I will go.
Well, then, then why don't, so then why don't we put, why don't we put early, why don't we, why don't we have the work session in early August?
But, but to go to Shannon's part, why are we, what is the work session going to be referencing?
We should have work sessions and then work session and then meeting.
I think Jeffrey is saying that there might be someone first still around and if there's enough quorum, we could have a meeting.
Okay.
But also, yeah, but it's also.
We just don't, if, if you know your plans, then we could work around that for sure. You know, um, but I also appreciate your point that if it's published, then there might be an expectation.
Yeah.
I mean, the August work session is for September meeting. Usually we're, we're considering business about taking stuff to the September meetings, what we do. So how do we take stuff to the September meeting is the question.
You mean, well, no, we, we have a July work session. So maybe we cancel the July.
Okay, I say this, rather than have, rather than have a discussion on what if, what if, why don't, I think that I would suggest that we just take it out and then, and then in July, we can figure out and negotiate a date if we need something in August. So I, I say moves, take it out and then we'll worry about it in July. Rather than talk about, it's, it's not really worthy of debate. Just take it out.
Okay.
All right, so. So, so, um, but the problem is, is that, is that, um, the. Okay, so move, so you have to make, you have to make an amendment to the consent agenda. So Debbie, you want to?
Amendment.
Yeah.
That we take out the work session for August.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor. And then now, um, now the, the motion to approve the consent agenda, is there further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Thank you, excellent. Okay, and now apparently a resident. Uh, you know, we have listed the public comment here to seven to five, so a resident wishes to speak.
Joan, I'm sorry. Do you hear me?
Remember to tell us your name and your, and can you, can you, um, show us your video, can you?
She's on the phone.
She's on the phone, okay. Joan, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, should I put my, I don't know how to do this, so I'm, so I'm kind of founder-ing here, but I'm allowing.
Yes, perfect.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so I wanted to first tell you that I, I, um, I saw, I went to the, the Arborist talk today and it was really very, very nice and I had an opportunity to, you know, try to get out and walk in the morning and I'm not in the, the greatest kind of place emotionally. And I felt very, you know, kind of been feeling isolated and lonely. And, um, it was just such a nice thing and I wanted to tell you that, you know, when I went into the, um, the town hall, um, EJ and Justin were so nice and Linda Williams could not have been nicer. And it, 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 we talked about, um, you know, having sort of a little sessions, the, the way that you had a session, um, for the, um, the, the, the Russian writer that people came to. And I noticed many, many of the people were older people. And if you had, um, various sessions like that or just give people an opportunity to get together to talk about, you know, that there are issues with downsizing with maybe, you know, if my husband died four years ago and I never thought I'd have you know, time on my hands and, and are, so that's what I, I.
Okay, well, Joan, first of all.
Ideas and anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, well, thank you. So first of all, thank you for coming and asking all those good questions. Secondly, coincidentally, Linda is, um, you know, we have staff meetings frequently and Linda is going to be spearheading for next year, a lot of activities for our retiree kind of residents. So we'll make sure, and I think she's on, I think Linda's on.
And that's what she said. She was so impressive. I was just so excited. She was describing.
Linda, did you want to respond? You're, you're muted. Maybe Joan would like to chair, help you create events.
Yes, when Joan was in today, I did speak to her about what I'm trying to spearhead for the town. And I asked her, would she be willing to kind of work with me? And she actually called me today with some very good ideas, so.
Great.
So, yeah, so I'm real excited about that and I'm glad that she's excited about it.
All right. Well, thank you so much for listening to me and again, thank you for today. And Linda, you were wonderful and it was just very warm and comforting to be able to have somewhere to walk and talk to someone.
Oh, my pleasure and me too.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
Happy holidays for everything. Happy holidays for you or for all the work you do all year. My gosh.
Excellent. Thank you, bye bye. Okay, wonderful. The next, and now we will turn to the building administrators report and I'm going to turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But before I let Doug get into his report, I have some news for the council. It is this morning Doug did hand me his letter of resignation as building engineer.
Well, retirement.
Retirement, uh, his retirement letter, I should say. Uh, his last day of summer set will be January 31st, 2025.
But you don't have to accept the letter.
Yes, we do.
The town code.
No, we do and it's not, and we will share the letter and, 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 um, uh, we will be honoring him appropriately.
And he's been working at the town, uh, since 2015 as building engineer. And then he's also offered to exalt briefly, um, as we transition into a, a new building engineer. So I just figured this out today, so I don't have a plan yet, uh, but once they get a plan together to find a new, uh, his replacement, I wouldn't want to.
I think, I think he's worked for the town longer than 2015.
As a, as a consultant, yes.
Yeah. Because when I, well, Doug, we'll talk about it when we, when we have our tribute to him. Okay. Mr. Loemeyer, do you have your report?
All right, good evening. At, well, thank you for what you just said. I'm sorry to be leaving, but it's time to move on. Uh, at 4716 Fallstone, they have recently constructed a new fence. It's a corner lot and the fence does not, uh, conform to the town's fence regulations. Uh, recently we sent a notice of violation. And today I suggested that the town send a stop work order because they haven't responded to any of our requests. At 5529 Surrey Street, which is right next door to the Fallstone lot, they also recently constructed a fence that does not comply with town code. They also received a notice of violation and have not responded. So again, I suggested we send them a stop work order. At, uh, 4906 Fallstone, we just received an application to construct some additions to the existing house. The staff is reviewing those plans now. At 5401 Uppingham Street, uh, they've also submitted an application, we're reviewing those plans. They want to make some additions to the existing house there. And at 5528 Trent Street, their building permit expires on December 19th. They will be submitting a building permit extension for that property. And that concludes my report.
What, what number house?
Okay, council, hold on. Thank you. Council president, Bart, do you have any questions?
I'm a little bit puzzled by the two homes that are in violation with their fences. Are the fences backing to each other or are they separate fences?
They're backing up to each other about a foot apart. One of them, with the one on Fallstone, is too tall. It, uh, has, the code requires that the finished side face the neighbors. Their finished side faces the property owner, which is in violation. And it's also, uh, so they've been contacted and told to correct it. As far as I know, they haven't responded to EJ at all. The one on Surrey is, uh, is a requirement that within 39 feet of the face of curb on Surrey, the fence cannot be any taller than, uh, uh, 42 inches. The fence does comply with that, but it doesn't comply with the site plan that you all approved back a year ago. So he's got to submit a site plan application to show the new location of the fence. And again, he hasn't responded to that either, so I think we need to send them a stop work order on both.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to, they both need fences if they're back to back, but well, I, I'll stop there. That's only an observation. All right.
Okay. That's it, thank you. Councilor Circo, do you have any questions?
Just, um, thank you, but summary. The two Uppingham houses, 5412 and 5415 that want to build screened porches.
Um, yes.
I just want to double check my recollection of the code. Then when you do a built-in screen porch, that becomes part of your like footprint on the property, so it has to, we have to calculate to make sure that they're not exceeding their percentage allowance for the property, right? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. Once a porch is screened because part of a building, it's not a projection any longer. And what I'm requiring to do is provide us with the building lot coverage calculations that shows that it complies with the county's code.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Is it?
That's it.
Council member.
I just, what's the number of the house?
Heller.
What's the number of the house on Fallstone that's, that's backing up to the other fence? Also has a two long fence. I missed that address.
4716.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you say the question again?
No, I just needed an address, Doug, sorry.
It's almost diagonal from your house.
4716 Fallstone.
It's the House of Light, it's the Surrey House and the house behind it.
So it's the.
It's right on the corner of Fallstone and Surrey. The big white house.
Oh, the house that has the swimming pool?
Yes, yes. As you're on Fallstone going to the pool, it's on the corner, on your right, on the corner of Fallstone and Surrey, that house has built a fence in the back. And then behind it is a smaller house that's in a live construction. And they have also built a fence.
All right.
So the fences are like eight inches apart or something.
See, I had wondered if the house on Surrey, the, um, that house that, I went by its fence, it looks pretty tall too. Is that a conforming fence?
No.
It's past Doug.
No?
As Doug.
Doug, the house on Surrey, next to this Fallstone, next to the corner Fallstone house that's under construction, is that fence conforming? It looks pretty tall to me.
No, the, the part that's within 39 feet of the curb is 42 inches, which complies with the code. Beyond 39 feet, it's six and a half feet, which also complies with the code. The only problem is it doesn't comply with the approved site plan.
Okay, so.
So it's an administrative change.
Okay. Got them.
Is that, is that it?
I see.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I don't, sorry.
Councilor Kumar.
Thank you. Doug, sorry to hear that you'll be moving on, but looking forward to celebrating you at some point and thank you for your service. Um, just wanted to flag that it's possible that the fence at 4716 Fallstone was built in response to the fence. That's all right. So it might be worth for the town staff to just talk to the property owner and understand what's going on before we, you know.
It sounds like they haven't responded to.
Yeah, maybe, maybe try again. Um.
I have sent them an email, I think back in the summertime, telling them what portions of the code they're in violation of. And also I believe EJ has sent them at least one email telling them that they need to respond, so they're just ignoring us.
This is 4716?
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Of course.
This is Ron. Doug, could you explain what is the deviation from the site plan, just for my benefit?
On, on Surrey?
Yes.
The site plan showed the fence would not start until 39 feet from the face of curb. They actually built the fence according to the code, but it begins 29 feet from curb, which is not what the approved site plans, uh, stated.
Okay, so they need an amended permit application.
Yes, sir.
But then the other property, you said the fence is built too high in violation of the code.
Yes, plus it has the finished side facing the property owner and not the adjacent properties.
Gotcha.
And there's one other violation I don't remember.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, are you done?
My, my only request is maybe try once more before we go down a different path.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Councilor Revak, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is public hearing, consideration of a resolution to adopt a contributions donations and gives policy. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This policy was introduced last month before that was the special work session. So I don't really have anything that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council member, Council President Bart, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, it's on 2.9 applicable criteria for monetary donations. And what I'm looking for is definition of the town. Uh, here, where it says the town may decline to accept any donation that is contingent of restricted condition. Who is the town in that sentence? And similarly.
Why is that? Ask, ask, that's a good question. Mr. Town Attorney, what do you recommend there?
So where just the town is used, is used, that would mean the council by majority vote. We can, we can certainly put the town council there to make that more express.
Okay, that's add town council and similarly further on, it's the same thing, uh, any donations, except with any condition or restricted condition, it's used by, by the town that is inconsistent with the charter shall be declined by the town council.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay, you'll, you'll, at the time, you can amend it. All right. Do you have any other questions?
Um, that, on that, no.
Okay, thank you. Council member, sir, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions, thank you.
Councilor Revak.
No questions.
Uh, so this is a public hearing, is any, is any, um, citizen? Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
So moved?
No, you want to do it with amendment.
No, all right. Move that we amend the section 2.9 where it refers to town making a decision to a town council making the decision.
So you're moving the resolution with that amendment. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Kumar, okay. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us, thank you. Excellent. Next item. Public hearing, consideration of a resolution to adopt a town hall rental policy. Mr. Town Manager.
This was in two years last month as well, discussed in the work session before that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council President Bart, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Circo.
No questions.
Councilmember Heller.
No question.
Councilor Kumar.
No question.
Councilor Revak.
No question.
And I don't think we have any citizens here.
But we have.
Do, do they wish to speak? Oh, okay. Okay, so. Oh, excellent, okay. Uh, council, you're prepared to make a motion? So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, remember we have a 10-minute rule. And we are 10 minutes, we are more than 10 minutes ahead, so, um, but it's only for a minute, so I'll call it and then and then hopefully, uh, we'll get back.
You can ask a question that's not on the agenda.
No, 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 no. Okay, so the next item is public hearing, consideration of a resolution to adopt an overgrown vegetation management policy. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. I do have something that here, uh, this has been discussed, uh, council meeting before in the work session. At the last council meeting, uh, the council requested some edits. And so those edits have been made, so I'm just, I will. Both edits occurred in 2.1, council set maintenance standards. So the first one was a request that it was noted that some sidewalks are larger than the ADA minimum. So, uh, the council wanted to make sure that it was clear, the entire width of the sidewalk was cleared. I worked, uh, on this specific edit with the pedestrian safety working group and so uh, the, it now says all sidewalks should be free of vegetation for the entire width of the sidewalk. And at the minimum, all sidewalks must meet ADA standards for accessible pathways, at least 36 inches of clear and obstructed passage for a height of 188 inches. So that was the first edit and then the second edit is in the below the two points. Uh, and there was mention of wanting to make it clear that street signs were uh, important, uh, one of the most important things not to be obstructed. So now it reads, in addition, the town may require pruning or approval of private vegetation, public or private property to eliminate obstructions to pedestrian or motorist access and visibility, including but not limited to obstruction of street signs. Uh, and so there's, uh, everything else is, everything is the same from the last council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Bart, do you have any question?
No, I just got an observation. I mean, part of our current code is that the owner of a private property adjoining a public right of way such as a sidewalk, um, shall not permit grass or weeds to grow within the right of way to a height in excess of 12 inches above the ground. Um. And do we observe, I mean, are we following that or not?
Uh, I mean, it isn't the code.
It's, it's, so who's your question to?
Well, it's to EJ. Said owner shall not let grass trees grow within the right of way to a height in excess of 12 inches above the ground. So in other words, they're allowed to grow within to a height of 12 inches over the right of way, right? That's what that's saying. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Said owner shall not permit grass or weeds to grow within the right of way to a height in excess of 12 inches above the ground, which would imply that we are allowing in that code them to have grass or weeds growing to a height of 12 inches in public right of way. Is that, am I reading that wrongly?
But why don't you ask the town attorney?
Okay.
Yeah, that's that, that is correct. We would allow that. Generally speaking, the unimproved portion of the right of way is allowed to be maintained by the adjoining property owners. You know, they can plant low growing plantings and the like, landscape it, you know, as long as it doesn't interfere with the sidewalk or the street. That's the common practice among municipalities in the area.
This section, uh, this section is referring to that, this strip of land between the curb and sidewalk.
Okay. Got it. All right.
Oh, mine's not good. Did you, um, do you have any further questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, Councilor Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
Okay, I want to try to understand this. I think I'm not. Here's our sidewalk. Here's the street. Here's the house.
Yeah.
So the house may not have anything more, more taller than 12 inches height next to the sidewalk?
No, the, uh, on the side, on the section between the street and the sidewalk, because that's the public right of way.
The street and the sidewalk, 12 inches over there. Okay, so, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kumar.
No question.
Thank you. Councilor Revak.
No questions.
Are there comments or questions from any citizens? Okay, uh, are you, council, you're prepared to make a motion?
Uh, move, we adopt the resolution. We move with that. Consider move with, we adopt the resolution to adopt an overgrown vegetation management policy.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor? Is it, is it? Uh, the next item. To consider introduction of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to revise provisions applicable to town committees, Mr. Town Manager.
Unfortunately, I was not at the last work session, but this was brought in. Um, so I was talking to the council president about this. I may have made a slight misunderstanding in the recording. Is this resolution only has the fiscal year part? And then the part about, uh, in the absence of a chair of the council member liaison making meetings of the committee, the only chairperson is appointed. Uh, I had taken away from the recording that the term limits for chairpersons wanted the council any more discussion on that. But the council president indicated that it was meant to be part of this resolution. So that's, uh.
But we can, okay, but remember, this is just an introduction, so, okay, so thank you. Thank you. Council, President Bart, do you have any questions?
Right, so Debbie, this was your part where, um, The language was roughly that a committee chair may serve no more than five years, um, and must. Step down from being chair for two years after that. You, you had something along those lines, right?
Well, why don't you, well.
I can read the language.
Right now. So you'll be able to discuss this, but right now. It's the opportunity to ask questions of. The town manager or the town attorney about what you have. And then you can discuss it. But if we, it'll take a long time if we start having all kinds of. Side things. So did you have any questions?
Well, the only question bears on that issue.
I can read what was brought up at the work session.
All right.
At the work session, uh, it was a clear nuisance. An individual under the chairperson section. An individual may be nominated and appointed as a chairperson of a town committee for five consecutive years. After which they must wait two years until they may be nominated and appointed as chairperson of the same town committee.
And that was your, your language.
Actually, it was not my language.
So why don't you wait until, you know, right now, just ask questions with, then you, you can have a. Long discussion on what you want to introduce. But did you have any other questions about what? Is drafted? No?
No, sorry, I did, yeah, sorry.
Councilmember Circa.
No.
Councilor Heller.
No.
Councilor Kumar.
Um, yes, one question. I remember I was saying we would remove alternates.
Yes. It says, uh, it may have one alternate. So the potential for an alternate is still there, but the change was may have instead of must have. Sophisticated.
All right.
And Councilor Revak.
Um, no.
Okay, so now council, please, and I will let the council. President, the, the discussion on, uh. Whether or not, you, you know, what kind of draft you want to introduce.
Right, so, I mean, we had discussions at the other work session and the issue was about revolving the chair. Um, and somebody had suggested the language that we, that, that EJ, uh, raised, which is that the chair may. Serve consecutively up, consecutively up to five years, but after that must stand down for at least two years before, um, being reappointed as chair. And. What do other people think about that language? That's kind of where we are.
My concern is that we could find ourselves. Short people. Runs on these schemes. Because we force them to leave and we don't have. Have anyone else. So I would rather not to be. Overly prescriptive if we can avoid it, but. But I also appreciate the value of term limits. Just my thought.
All right. Tabby?
As much. As. I like the idea of limiting. Um, uh, you know, chairs. Because it just leads to a, um. Kind of the own, on, on the top, on the committee. I, I think Steve is right. We could have trouble finding a chair, you know, chairs to do this, to do our work. The work needs to be done. And I almost think I'd like to back off of this language.
I agree.
You can take it out.
You know, in theory, I think it's great, but.
We can take it out.
I mean, the ver- the version that. EJ has presented does not have the language in it, so it can stand as is. If that's everybody's feeling.
Right, I just said one, and then second, and there's no limit to.
See, 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 the thing is, I, I think it's better to not put the restrictions in because it's still possible. You remember, the mayor nominates. The chair and the council approves. So if there's a chair, if there's ever a chair, and this isn't really. Because this provision is not really addressing any specific work. Yeah, this is just like the generic thing. So let's say there's a chair that the council thinks has been there too long. Then if the mayor, um, nominates the per- then the council can let the mayor know, please don't renominate that person.
I think we.
Or, or the mayor. The mayor can nominate, uh, the person and the council can say, we don't, we want you to find somebody else. So there's still all those options. So I, I think that, that to put it in there restricts it too much.
I think we should do this differently. Why not just say? That every year. The mayor has to renominate the chairs.
Well, that's what it is now.
That's what it is. It doesn't happen. We don't talk about it.
Yes, we do. It's just used on the consent agenda. But you can take it, so it can be taken off. But I mean, really, the best. The best thing is that in work sessions that we have discussions of all these things. And then if. You know, if the council feels that. Uh. A chair in the future has been there too long. Find a way to move chairs or, there's, there's so many options. There are ways to find. People to, um. Still serve the town and not be chair of that one committee, you know?
And I mean, there, there are some committees that have changed chairs effectively. Um, budget committee has done, the environment committee has done, history committee in its day did as well. So I mean, there are ones that did change over. Um. And some of them are highly productive committees, um. It is a good thing, I think, for committee chairs to change. And is there any way that we can facilitate that change is what I'm saying? It obviously, it means somebody else has to come forward as chair, but.
But I think forcing it, I, I, I think forcing it is, is.
Probably forcing it's wrong, all right, probably forcing it's wrong, but it is.
It is. Because we, we're always going to have, I mean, we have trouble. I have trouble finding people to be on committees and, and to chair and. So.
People become divisive if we do it, if we do it. We use that language. Let's just take it out.
Yeah, right, I mean. I'm saying, I'm okay with that. I'm just saying, I think we want to think ways to in which we can get share turn, ways in which we can increase share turnover, basically.
Okay.
Make a motion.
All right, move that we, uh, uh.
This is just the introduction.
Introduce the ordinance to amend the code of order these. To. Revised provisions applicable to town committees.
Okay, is there a second?
Uh-huh.
Is there discussion? All of us in. Okay, so, you know. It might be good if. Councilmember Heller writes an article. About, about, um. The. Um. This whole issue and about how it would be nice if people rotate around. I mean, the thing is, if somebody's the chair of a committee and they're really good, maybe they can chair another commit, you know, switch to another committee, you know.
Right, I'll take that under advisement.
You know, I think it'd be good if someone wrote an article about, about this and also to encourage people to be on committees and all that kind of stuff.
I'd rather write an article that says. We've got wonderful committees in town. We hope that you hear.
Well, you, yes, anything, I think, I think it would just be good to write an article. About why. This is an important issue to you.
Got you.
And remember it. Um, and hopefully when it is. On the future agenda that people will come and comment. I mean, maybe people are going to say, we think, you know, we want to have an opportunity. You know, a lot of times there are people that want to serve, but because there's someone there, they're not, they don't want to step up, but they want to have a chance. You know?
There is that.
So that's, you know, and this is, this has happened, you know, in the past, that there are people that want to chair committees, but they didn't want to.
Right.
Okay, excellent. The next item is, uh. Public hearing on a potential motion to merge the traffic committee into the public safety committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of struggling to find chairs, uh, this was discussed the last work session, uh. The potential of merging the traffic committee into the public safety committee. And. Uh, after the work session, I emailed both members of the traffic committee. And asked that they would like to go ahead and join the public safety committee. And, uh, one of them has not responded to me, but the other one was on the consent agenda, uh, to join the public safety committee. Um, and so I think this. I have not heard any resident feedback on this potential matter here.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
Uh. No, I don't.
Councilmember Circa.
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
Nope.
Councilor Kumar.
No question.
Councilor Revak.
No questions.
Actually, can I just come up with, are we changing the name of the public safety committee to the Public Safety and Traffic Committee, or are we just leaving it Public Safety Committee?
Well, you can amend it, you can amend it.
I think, I mean, public, I think it's just.
Wait till, wait till we have the, um. We still have to, we want to hear from the public and then you can. So, um. Did, is any citizen? Okay, thank you. So now, uh, council, are you prepared to make a motion? So did, did you want to make a motion? Well, with a different name?
I, it was just, all right, I'll make the motion to see where people feel like it. Do we want to? Retain the idea of a traffic committee by invert, by having Public Safety and Traffic Committee.
So why don't you make?
So I make the motion to call the new committee, the Public Safety and Traffic Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, now discussion.
I mean, traffic just kind of seemed, I mean, I, I like, I don't really care either way, but. Public safety is about traffic and cars and everything as well, so it's kind of redundant in my view, but I mean, if you guys want to call it that, then. I don't really care.
There's a degree of passion for traffic.
Huh?
There's a degree of passion for traffic in town. Maybe we keep the name and eventually it goes away.
I, I agree with you, except it's such a commitment, such, such an overwhelming.
Yeah, they can't find a traffic ahead.
They seem to be commenting on it a lot.
They may comment, but they don't want to do much.
Right.
So I think keeping it. Putting it under the umbrella of public safety, which, or traffic does belong. I think is the way to do it. I think it sounds redundant to say. Public safety and traffic.
In the name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because then what else will be leaving out? Will become a public safety and traffic and snow and whatever and Halloween and.
No, because they have merged those.
I know, but I just said, public safety is public safety.
All right, I mean.
There is no committee member.
So there's a motion on the table. Is there further discussion?
You want to amend it?
But, God, I'll just, I mean, I'll just bring up, you know, a lot of the discussion in the traffic committee was on parking. Um, which, believe me, if you want obsessive discussion in town, that's. That's something that really gets people going. Is that really public safety?
Parking? Yeah, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, I'll say.
That's a stretch.
Well, no, I mean.
I think the key thing is that there isn't anyone in traffic. When you're.
Right.
So then I think it would make sense if they felt like. They were being merged and their name went away, but in this instance, there isn't.
That's right. It was a ground swell. Oh, my God, we're taking away my committee.
Probably fine, it was.
We would be having this conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that the Public Safety Committee umbrella name. Does a lot more than just like adding in traffic, like, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different facets to it that we can just, it's all kind of swooped underneath it. Without calling out all the individual things that the Public Safety Committee does, because, you know, they also are working with, um. You know, looking in the sidewalk, you know, just like, I just think it's, I, I think it's redundant.
Shannon, using that argument, the environment committee covers public safety. And it covers traffic and it covers parks and natural resources, you know, be, in, in other words, the terms that we use could be interpreted broadly or narrowly. And the question is.
Right, I just think that it's Public Safety Committee, I, I just don't think it needs to be an traffic committee, but I, like I said, I don't real, I mean, it's, I'm going to sleep well tonight. However, it's called, um, but.
There isn't anyone currently in traffic committee. Getting upset about it. I'd see no harm in.
There's at least one person to the traffic committee joining the public safety committee. It would be nice to call Public Safety and Traffic Committee.
Well, the motion is to rename it. Is to merge it and name it the Public Safety and Traffic Committee. So is there further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed? Okay, so that.
Hopefully I lose.
So now is there?
Okay.
Don't take it personally.
Yeah.
It's okay, is, but you're legislating, so that's good. Uh, is there a further motion? Are you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, move to merge the traffic committee into the Public Safety Committee.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All of us opposed, thank you. That was an excellent discussion. The next item, public hearing and potential motion on the merging of the environment. And Parks and Natural Resources Committees into the Environment and Parks Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was discussed at the. Flatwork session as well. I gave my recent memo. I do know that there was, uh, some discussion about this merger. And the necessity or, um. Just about the merger generation saying, I will say that. Following the work session. Just like I did with traffic, I did reach out to the. There's a. Parks and Natural Resources, seeing if they have one that joined the environment committee, uh, one of them was already on the main, so that, on both committees, so that they. Think it's quite easy and I don't think I've heard the other one.
Pretty word for the chair.
All right, well done.
Yeah, done.
I'm the chair of Parks and.
Hold on, hold on. Do you have any feelings?
Your board.
My board.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Bar, do you have any questions?
At this point, no, I mean, I, I have fledged my own census of Parks and Natural Resources and I don't see any objections to merging with the environment committee at this point.
Thank you, Councilor Circa.
No questions.
Councilor Heller.
No questions.
Councilor Kumar.
Have you heard from the both of chairs? And I heard from the chair of environment, um. But I. Will say that today, sent the newsletter actually stepping down from.
Yeah, actually, the, the, um, um. Chair Rubenstein is, uh, passing the torch. Okay. And, and, um, we have a candidate. He's, he has a suggestion, whichever we shared to you yet, said, but I think that person looks up, so.
Okay, and then, uh, the P N R C, the chair. Uh, is not currently living in Somerset.
Well.
What's on email?
Well, the chair, he's still resident and he's temporarily abroad, but. He could chair the committee still, so we need to find out. Because, you know, we do meetings.
I didn't even know the committee chairs about the initial proposals, uh. Not only about the merging and also the code changes, um, or the fiscal year changes, and I did not hear. Anything about this part of the proposal.
Well, I've been trying to call.
Yeah.
I, I can call.
Yeah, he's on email, he's online.
I think anybody who chairs a committee needs to live here. If, if you're in a house here.
He does live here, the.
But he doesn't live here this year. He's gone for the year. He's very far away.
It doesn't.
Still around.
Well, so then you can.
We will have a long list if we go.
So, first of all, the committees are being merged, the committees are being merged now.
Right.
So he wouldn't be the chair anymore, but he, but. He, but he still has the right to be on a committee. And to chair. Is there further discussion? Is there a motion?
No, there's, uh, Shannon.
Oh, Shannon, Councilor Ro, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
We're going to include you now.
Did any citizen wish to speak?
No, it's fair.
Okay, council, you're prepared to make a motion?
All right, I move that we, um. Merge. The environment. And Parks and Natural Resources Committees and rename the joint committee, the environment and parks committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Yeah.
Excellent. And our last item. Is a report by the town manager on the. American Rescue Plan Act funds and the application of remaining funds. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this is very exciting. So, uh, you all.
For some of you.
Uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, I did a summary because, uh. I wrote actually a paper about it my final year, final semester college, so. The, neither here, there, anyone, important stuff.
Yeah, that is important.
Oh, that's excellent. Now you're lamenting.
It's very important.
So the town of Somerset received, uh, one point two five million. Uh, back when. The allocation first happened. Uh, basically, the reasons this is coming up is that kind of not yet obligated all its funds and all funds must be obligated by the end of this calendar year. And then they must be spent by the end of calendar year twenty twenty six. So. Going kind of to the next, uh, I will say that the numbers I put, I put a note in here, but the numbers in my report come from. going kind of to the next, uh, I will say that the numbers I've put in over here, but the numbers in my report come from every year, we have to submit a report to the Department of Treasury, this was submitted in March by my predecessor, and so I have not yet updated the numbers. I mentioned though, the numbers are pretty much there. The only two things that are currently off is roadway concrete repairs, because that has gone up. And then, of course, that means the total expenditures, that's kind of. We have obligated eighty nine point, eighty nine point zero four percent, uh, about one point one million dollars, leaving just about one hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for ten point nine six percent. Uh, just as kind of a quick summary of the projects that were done through ARPA, uh, the new website, the stormwater master plan, L A D streetlight replacement project, uh, the A V improvements at Town Hall, uh, stormwater permit review and tree plan things, uh, and those are all the projects that have been completed through ARPA. And then, finally, is the obligation of remaining funds. Uh, there's a lot of different things that you go to, I gave a recommendation, um, just, I decided to focus in on two of the capital projects that have been budgeted for this fiscal year. The pool bridge and the installation of solar panels on the roof of the pool house. I give a couple of reasons why. I will also comment on the pool bridge is, as a first step for the renovation, I have had it inspected. Uh, and I'm meeting with the inspector to get their report Thursday, and that will be the topic at the work session, uh, before we, so, just a quick update on that. Since we budgeted about ninety thousand, so, we budgeted ninety thousand for the pool bridge renovation, and then seventy thousand for the solar panel installation, so it wouldn't cover the entire costs, but it would seriously put a dent in the costs. And these are two projects that I know residents are really excited about. So, I wrote a memo that the council isn't supportive of this recommendation, or would like to make their own recommendation. This can be voted on at the December sixteenth work session. Um, I'm also, I'll also just comment that, working with the Chair of the New Finance Revenue and Budget Committee, uh, to make sure that we spend it all, we're gonna add a new element to the budget, just to really, uh, we haven't started it yet, but part of this budget cycle will be adding an element to the budget, so we can really keep track of the expenditures, so we don't, uh, lose any money. And then that is my report, copy that.
Thank you. Council President Barrie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, it, it's, are you sure you can obligate, that is, award contracts for the two activities that you're intending to use remaining funds for, which is the pool bridge and the solar panels by the end of the month, because that is, you can.
Yeah, that's gonna be the, uh, this would be at the December work session, so.
So, you, you have people in mind to award the contracts too?
Yes.
You do? All right, okay. That's the question.
That's your question. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circa.
You have a question, I just wanted to comment, this is great that this has been coordinated, and we've done it all in the past, because I remember when we first started on this path, there were some proposals, I'm a loots, like spend ten percent of our grant just on some company provide oversight of the grant. That's like, did you say money? So, thank you very much for taking care of it. That's all, no, no questions.
Thank you, Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, this, this is very exciting, this is great, thank you.
And Councilor Kumar?
Uh, I have, uh, two things. One, first of all, I the categories, you, these are from the report.
Yes.
Matt, I would just double check the budget file. Uh, and maybe you have already, just to double check if the categories correspond to the ones that are per group categories, just to be hundred percent clear, because we had some flexibility. One of the decisions we collectively made, it made this part of our budget process, not a separate thing. So, that gave us optionality, so just make sure we are reporting the correct categories. The second is, I think these proposals sound great. I mean, the only other thing I can think of is the stormwater project that's been going on. I don't know where that stands. I doubt it. That's the only category that would fit, given ARPA.
Yeah, that's a good point. First of all, he's, oh, yeah, I was just.
Do you, do you, did you consider that? It's a, I did, but like you said, it's not gonna happen in. Thank you, sir.
Councilor Rorick?
So, for the pool bridge renovation, like, you know, if they say that we do, in fact, you know, need to have that renovated, on, is that ninety thousand dollars? Like, is that already like a quote or?
No, that's what we budgeted, uh, and that's what's in our budget.
But we don't have a quote for that yet. I feel like ninety is kind of a low.
I have an answer to that later.
Um, and then, okay, so, when would we need to then, like, have that official quote done for the pool bridge?
Uh, yes, so the quote will be, the quote will be part of the inspection, that's like part of it.
Okay, and so that would, we're aiming for that to be, you know, let, potentially, if we need it and all that thing, signed off on before the end of this year.
Yeah.
And when they're doing that, can they, um, can you ask them about like, a better way to close off, like, that bridge, like, for swim meets and stuff, like, or have, you know, like, uh, something where we could, like, chain it across and then bring it back if, when people and when, you know, when cars with handicap need to go through, we can open that up, but then also shut it off for all the rest of the people that are trying to drive into the pool and drop their kid off, sort of late. Because that's a really, like, that, it's like a big public safety concern and traffic, um, and, uh, because, I mean, so I just want to make sure. And parking, there's a lot there.
Okay, do you have it?
Uh, but I just want to make sure that for, for that proposal, like, if they can think about that side of it too. Okay, that's all.
So, I'm gonna run through the council one more time, because I think you have further. Council President Barrie, you had something else?
Yeah, right, I mean, it, it's, I don't know quite where the stormwater contract for the, um, Warwick Dorset Corner, where it sits, I know his quote was higher than what we had budgeted. And this in principle could be a way in which we could cover the funds that way, but hasn't the contract not been awarded yet? What's the story?
Uh, the last thing I have in my notes about this is that, uh, council was, um, concerned about the price, and so we didn't even get, so, not a second opinion, but, uh, a better quote for the space, which we haven't received.
Okay, so, what, what is your? Well, hold on, hold on, because remember, people are trying to listen to this, so.
Also add that there was also a concern amongst the council about the, the effectiveness of the proposal for the house.
But, yes, there was. I mean, the, I, I raised some of those questions myself. He actually doubled, literally doubled his estimate between first meeting and the second meeting, um, at that time. Uh, but who, are we asking for a revised estimate from him, or are we trying to get another contractor?
Another, not another contractor.
And have you reached out to L I D C or any other? I mean, we do need to move on that. Yeah, all right, well, it won't be done by the end of the month, obviously, so it isn't effective for this, yes. All right, but we do need to move on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Circa, do you have any further questions? Okay, thank you. Councilor Heller?
No, but I think, um, just to comment, on the, uh, bridge and the gate, I do have an idea of how to do that. Just to start a conversation for, for you, you know, we can talk about, so let you know.
Okay, Councilor Kumar?
Um, I just wanted to respond to Shannon. We had asked, like, preliminary estimate from American Pool, like, something for budgeting purposes. We had understood it to be a minimum for the, for the, for the bridge renovation. We expected it to be higher than that.
Yeah.
We needed something to anchor the budget amount.
Yeah.
And so that's what we went with.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I remember.
Is it, when I asked you in America, both of you?
No, I think for, for almost everything, we got, almost everything, uh, the last, you know, previously, we used to not get any estimates. They were round figures, we would throw numbers, so we, I would say for eighty, ninety percent of things in the budget, we got estimates.
Gotcha.
But for some things, we did, and I told Matt to just get the best estimate he could get from someone as a anchor point for the budget. Matron. So, I think that this one was one of them, is my recollection.
Yeah.
Because there was no, no way to get a full proposal without an assessment and inspection.
Right.
And all of that, so we had to anchor it at some dollar.
Yeah.
So, I, it's a good catch. It'll likely be the minimum.
Okay, did, did you have anything else?
Yeah. No, no, no.
Okay, Councilor Rorick?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before, no. I wanted to say something.
Wait, wait, do we all agree to the proposal, right, for those two projects?
Then there, it's again at the work session. Any other business?
Yes, one quick business, and that is, I need everybody to re-sign that letter. Justin just went to print it out, because we're gonna send it to, we share it with all the other communities, like, we got their letters.
Okay, we can do that after we. Okay, is there, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, thank you. Okay, now.
And now you can't even sign.
I have to sign it again?
Yes. Thank you very much, Justin.